One o'clock sign. Ty, send those five to hell out there after we're done.
I can order, I'll say to the mineral council, when you're meeting, you entertain a motion, you come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Off the vote.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah.
Chairman Reddigo.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Okay, could you go get Larry Stewart?
Yeah.
Should be out a lot by now.
Chairman.
Remove and uh, put him back on the business.
Would you entertain a motion that allows the council to travel to the BIA board to say, "She's meeting in Oklahoma City on the third."
Motion on the floor.
Second.
There you go, Councilman Shackleford.
You're fine, Senator.
You're fine. Any discussion on the Oklahoma City trip?
I've never heard anything about it.
Harry, Harry Dunn, off the vote.
Chairman Reddigo.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes, even though I haven't heard about it before today.
That's incorrect.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, council. Welcome back, Larry.
Thank you.
And uh, kind of, if you could, the last time we talked, you said the, you know, Trumbly's had sold their land. Is that true? And uh, we, we, that's one thing we really wanted to know. And uh, they were kind of, you know, opposed to this. Go ahead, you got the follow.
Uh, well, I don't know, been at this many times. Uh, finally, years ago or something, I was here, and Claude Millsap owned the property up there on Wild Horse Creek. We were over in between Hominy and Skitook, Wild Horse Creek. Uh, anyway, Claude Millsap had it, and Trumbly's had it. Uh, that turned into a fiasco. Millsap has now sold his property to a gentleman, Matt Loveless.
I want to explain things. Go ahead.
Matt Loveless bought the property. I've got a signed contract with him for the damages out there. Uh, I thought I had a deal of working with the Trumblys. And I guess that would sell. I don't know what happened, but then uh, Trumbly's had said, "Sold the property." And I've got, but I think of the verbal commitment with that. So, uh, anyway, so I'm ready to get another resolution to make.
Council, council. This is a new buyer?
A new buyer?
That you're having a negotiation with?
Uh, first name Nicole, I guess, I think his last name.
Chairman, I think that if he can get the uh, written item for us, there we should, we'll be happy to work with you on that. You say you already have one with the level? You have one in, in hand?
Yes, yes.
But you have one. I think if, if he could like get us the other side, we can take care of it.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Stewart.
I'm not.
No questions. Councilman Redcorn.
Yes, uh.
I don't see you on the agenda.
No, I was a.
He was a late, late, late.
So what do you ask of council? I'm, I'm here.
I'm sorry. Uh, I've been trying to open up the old quarry that's there between Hominy and Skitook.
Oh, okay.
And anyways, right there on Wild Horse Creek.
Okay.
Anyway, Trumbly and Millsap used to own property. Both of their properties have changed since.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So what are we doing today, chairman?
Making a mo- making a proposal to open up a quarry between.
Don't you have another one?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I did, yes, ma'am.
Hold on. Uh, making, making a proposal to open up a quarry, a rock crusher, in, in the Wild Horse area. It's in your book.
Okay, I, I just don't see it on the.
He was a late entry. I, I, I called Lacy yesterday to put him back on the agenda.
Oh, I had this idea was, I asked him if he did not have another rock quarry over there on the way to Hominy. I've seen your name over there on that. You've been here before, and I can't remember the name of the attorney that was with you that day.
Uh, a hundred years ago.
So this is.
Attorney here in town has heard the thing.
Yeah, this is, this, those, those guys gave you permission, and they said they didn't give you, they turned it into a big, big deal. So you're, this is what you're working on now? Trying to open this up as an?
Yes.
Okay. Did that happen? I don't know. Six, eight years ago?
Yes.
Something like that.
Did I hear you have?
I have three quarries operating right now.
All those things?
No. I have one in Hominy, Kushe, and then Cole.
Any other question for the council? Any other question for the council? Any kind of motion to accept, Mr. Stewart, the vote?
No, I can't do that until I see the other.
I have a statement.
Any other, any, entertain a motion.
Councilman Rebar has a statement.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Uh, I'd like to kind of digest this and see if this is competitive pricing and what have you. This is, wasn't on the agenda, for one thing.
It was a late, it was a late entry. She just didn't.
So I'd like to have the opportunity to, to review it and before we go on.
Check, table it.
It's not on the, it's not on the agenda to take. I guess you put it on the agenda.
So just a statement?
Go ahead.
Uh, you said everything's in the notebook, but that's not filled in till I get here, right?
I didn't understand your questions.
Uh, you said it's all in your notebook.
It should be.
So I'm like, we didn't get it till I walked in ten o'clock this morning. So I, I, I'd like to look at it.
entertain a motion to, to table it?
I already made the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the table? Harry Dunn, off the vote.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, Larry, we would.
What is the clarification of that, Big Horse? What, what do you need?
You have one signed element contract with a property owner. If we could see the other one, then we could.
So you want to see both sides? I mean, you want me to make a deal with both landowners?
Oh, yeah, you have to go across it. If, if it's only one landowner you're dealing with, we could appropriate do that. But I know the property, and you know there's two of them there.
Right.
And if I read my map right, you're, you're gonna have to cross some of this property.
Well.
If you make a deal with that.
It would be better if I had the property.
Under contract.
Well, say, it's a, it's a dangerous intersection where the old quarry usually go in and out on the county road that's there. That's why I hope to get what used to be the Trumbly property, because then I would have a safe entrance in and out of there.
On the highway?
On the highway, yes.
Yes, sir, I'm very aware of the property. Yes, my family's next door to it, buried beside. And then Mr. Holmes' property's back behind you. I, I just wouldn't, I would have to have it, because that is correct. Well, he's gonna have trouble coming down that county road. And then you're gonna add this other to ODOT of the coming on to the highway. And he has fallen those, uh, ODOT qualifications.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, I, I have a question. I have a question here. Thank you, chairman. So I'm trying to think, you're trying to negotiate with surface owners.
Yes.
To lease their land.
Yes.
And uh, so, you wouldn't want to lease it without knowing that we're going to allow you to, uh, without entering to a, an agreement with us. So it's kind of a, a catch twenty-two. I was just wondering, are you going to, to try to get options from the surface owners? I don't know how you can negotiate with them, and then, and then what if, what if we say no? Yep.
Well. Which, which we probably won't, but I guess, frankly speaking, this, this whole thing's a crazy, just a crazy, crazy. Uh, the way, um, throwing it out there, the way the council has approached this, and the way the Bureau of Indian Affairs has approached this. There will never be another quarry in Osage County, because you have allowed the landowners to stipulate whatever they can charge. And the, the, I paid thirty cents in Hominy County, all in. That's for damages on the land, for the rock, for everything. Now, I come into Osage County, I don't know for a fact, but I've been told that any creek guy, they're paying landowners like a dollar, or pay me twice a dollar. That's two dollars to a fungible thing, where my rock is no better, in one place than the other. And so, the, as I read the rules, I, the bureau should issue me a permit. I take the permit, and I go to the landowner and say, "This is the deal that I think is fair. If the landowner says no, that's terrible. Just leave him with our recreation."
Okay, okay. So it starts with us.
That right?
Being you take that, and you negotiate with the guidelines of the BIA, whatever their going rate is, I'm sure that they represent restricted Indians, and they do this.
Probably not.
Uh, or maybe not. So the first step is to get a resolution from us that we would grant you this permit. Uh, or grant you an easement, I guess maybe it's called, uh, and the permit would come from the BIA.
The royalty amount comes from us, but we want.
So what, all I want is time to look at the numbers and see if this is a fair, reasonable offer to us. And I haven't had, like Councilman Reddigo said earlier, we just saw this for the first time, and I don't know, and I'm unfamiliar enough with the, with the competition, the quality of the rock. Uh, that sort of thing, so I'd like to have an opportunity to digest it.
Council Redcorn.
Thank you, chair. Uh, I recommend you go talk with the bureau, because the rights we get of rock is set.
Yes, sir.
So, talk to them, and all the guys, you know, how you need to come to us.
Well, kind of like we decided, I, I've got a snake, I've got a hole in the snake in the middle, and I can't tie either ends down. Because, you know, the bureau's doing one thing, council's doing one thing, with the landowner doing one thing. And so.
It's pretty cut and dry for us.
Oh, I understand.
You go in, you get a permit, and this is how much you're gonna pay.
Yes.
Now, we can't speak for the landowner, but BIA, that's their job.
I understand, and I understand most of what you mean, but I've got a very, practically the same attitude as the council does. I have, according to the bureau, I have to get an agreement with the landowner, whether it's for a dollar or a hundred dollars, a ton or acre.
There it is.
It's real silly, we drill it a well, you get it really, we drill a well, you have to have the leads first.
I'm, I'm here quite bid, I'm willing to go with this gentleman too, Mr. Trumbly. Let's see, let's see what's going on.
Trumbly's out of.
Okay.
Trumbly's out of, he's sold the land.
No, I'll talk about superintendent.
Any more questions?
No, thank you.
Oh, I love it. Like you said, it's just such a crazy.
It's not like he hasn't been here before, he's been here before.
Oh, yeah, we're well versed on this, so.
We've had lawsuits, we've had this, so, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
We'll be in touch.
Be careful.
We'll be in touch.
All right, thank you. You want me to?
I just want to.
Yeah, 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 I got a bit simple, simple in it. You're gonna go there.
I guess I'll set up and get you one, have a landowner.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're, we're back to old business on the, on, on, on the meeting today.
Yes, sir.
Order, order, order.
Yeah.
Back to old business. Executive committee, that's, that's me, and uh, we decided to talk to the councilwoman, and started executive committee.
What do you want me to do?
We talked about it, she said she would, she said she would chair the committee, and it's gonna involve policies, it's gonna involve bylaws, we're gonna look everything up. We're gonna look at things that need to be changed, things that need to be amended, and whoever wants to be on this committee, can report to Lacy or Lacy or Lisa, and uh, you submit your name to them. If you don't want to be on the committee, you don't have to. Chair, Councilwoman Irwin is going to chair the committee, and uh, entertain a motion to, uh, accept this committee for the mineral council.
Lacy? We already have this committee.
Yeah, we already have.
And in the resolution, it states who is on the committee.
Yes, and, and.
Who's the chair of it?
They haven't met to, as far, as far as I know, to my knowledge, they haven't met to elect a chair within that committee.
They have their, what's their.
Excuse me, could I, could I make a comment?
No.
Councilman, Councilman Rebar.
Uh, thank you, chairman. The, uh, we already have this committee.
Yep. Why, why is it meeting yet?
Well, listen, we had, we had this committee, and I wanted to be on it. The, the, our bylaws allow for any of the council members to be on the committee. And typically, in all the committees that we've had before, that I've been around in the last seven years, is that the chairman of the committee is appointed by vote of the committee members on the first meeting. All right? To my knowledge, the committee that we're talking about already exists. Uh, it was limited to four people, which I had checked into. And it was going to be Councilman Shackleford, Councilman Big Horse, Councilman.
Waller.
Waller, and who else? There's a fourth one.
Cheshwall.
Who? Uh, Councilman Cheshwall. Those are the four, and that was done by resolution. There's a resolution to that. And occasionally, when it's time for committee reports, you and I and a couple others give a report on the committee, the election committee, the only other committee we have. And we meet regularly, and uh, and we report to the full council and to the public, uh, to our iniquities. What we, what, what our progress is, and you have asked before if the executive committee had anything to report. And they never do, because they've never had a meeting yet. So I don't understand why we're recreating. We already have a resolution for this committee. And we already have committee members, and the committee members just need to meet and appoint a chairman and get on with it. Thank you. That's all I have, chairman. I'd like to be on the committee.
He's looking now. Well, if, if the election committee is represented here, do you all plan on meeting?
That's the question.
Do you all plan on meeting sometime? Executive, executive, executive committee.
Yeah, we'll have one family.
When?
Yeah.
I think. We'll have to get together, we'll have to set a date in the future, and we'll let you know, let the rest of the council know.
Just like you said, I've asked several times if you all met, and you haven't met yet.
Yeah. There's no dates, definitive dates, or when we had to convene, or when it had to happen, so. I accept people have been gone to DC, people have been traveling, things like that, so. We'll get together after, after the meeting, and then we'll set a meeting for the future.
Well, there's very, there's very, there's some very important issues that really have to be addressed, and you, you know what they are.
Yeah.
Back in day one, three years ago. Now, Councilwoman Irwin, with the chair of the council.
Thank you. I think that, uh, it's important that we need some of our policy procedures changed to protect our staff. I think there's problems here, big problems, and they need to be addressed and taken care of immediately. That was my understanding why they were gonna do it. Can you all take care of it, 'cause I don't, I don't care about getting on it.
I didn't realize you already, okay, well, on the, on the old business. Next item is item B, report, report on trip to DC. Anybody wanna talk about that? Report on trip to DC. Councilman Rebar, head of chairs. Redcorn.
I, I, yeah, I'll.
Go ahead.
Talk a little bit about it. I thought, I thought it was a, two good days of meetings. I mean, we got to, we got to talk to Mark Wayne, we got to talk to Langford, we got to talk to Lucas. Talked to the, uh, the interior, talked to us for over an hour, which according to our council, that's pretty amazing nowadays up in DC. And uh, we met with EPA, several other, you know, several other of the committees, different departments whenever we were up there. Out, but it seemed like everybody was real receptive to us, and they wanted to hear what we had to say. And a lot of them nowadays, they don't really, uh, know the difference between minerals council and the nation and executive. And we're kind of trying to, you know, get our point across to them about that. And I think we did. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Council, Council Redcorn, you want to report on it?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna call you, I didn't know if you wanted something written up.
No, just.
Just report. Yeah, I agree with Councilman, Second Chair, just a great meeting. Made a series of meetings with Mark Wayne Mullin, uh, Senator Langford. EPA, Department of Interior Scott Davis and his crew. I mean, we, and I agree with our council, council, our attorney, that we need to go up there in June, July, August.
September, September.
It was in September.
Okay.
Uh, June twenty-fourth. Uh, I was really encouraged with the EPA meeting, which seemed to me they were very interested in, uh, allowing us to maintain rule in Osage Reservation. Very interested. And we made that conversation to them. Uh, seemed like Senator Langford was very interested in the Osage headright holders. Being the main entity of reservation. And those, don't get clear. And then, uh, the Energy, Department of Energy, we made those communications clear that, you know, this is who we are. We represent the Osage headright holders, and we're here, they're not enjoying their, the recovery of their asset. How much, but there's a lot of people making money off this asset, I believe, and it needs to change. Even those fancy lawyers in DC, I said, "You gotta make a lot of money on it." These people are suffering, we're suffering out there, and we're on the bottom. We need to get our people moving and fed again, and get the money that they deserve. This is a big real estate. This is, this is theirs. And money needs to come to them, and we need to stop, you know, all the talking, let's get busy.
We have the rent.
And uh, we'll get that, get that going. Anyway, I thought we did a great job, the whole team, we seemed to get together on everything we were saying. And I appreciate it. Thank you, chair.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. So, uh, those are all good comments. In our legal council during executive session, uh, went through pretty, quite a bit of detail about the trip. To, to inform the other council members that were not present. Uh, of course, if our iniquity didn't hear that conversation, that I, so I'd like to, uh, take this opportunity to explain the issues that we put before all these administrative folks with the new administration. We were really well received in respect. Uh, one of the meetings we walked into, I felt a little bit taken aback, because, uh, in the meeting was, uh, uh, the legal council, uh, head of tribal litigation, Kristen Kokanos was there. Uh, we were kind of surprised that she was there. Uh, we, we were there, uh, in, that was at the Department of Interior, at the meeting with Scott Davis. So, uh, uh, the issues that we went there with, and we, uh, different groups of, different people we met with, different offices. We had different subject matters specific for that particular individual or group of people. One of the things that, that was foremost on our list was retaining our superintendent. So we got that on the table, that kind of been resolved. Really quickly. Uh, keeping the Bureau of Indian Agency open here locally was high on our list of things to talk about. When we were meeting with Senator Langford and his, uh, his assistant, I don't know the title, uh, but the staff member, maybe Derek Osborne. Uh, who is, has a long time relationship with this mineral council. Uh, they were almost shocked that, that, they were almost shocked, uh, to, to, uh, to learn that we, that, that, we weren't aware that the office was staying open. They've known about it since early March, because the chief had already negotiated, when I say the chief, the Osage Nation had already been in negotiations to renew their lease for a period of three years with, I think, a couple of year, uh, option of some sort, so over a five-year period. That was already pretty much decided in March, that that office wasn't going to be closed. In fact, it got on that closure list by accident. Our, uh, legal council told us today, that was just surely an accident that that got put on there. So, uh, Mr. Osborne and Senator Langford both said, "That office is staying open. If there's any rumor otherwise, let us know, and we'll squash it." Okay, so that was the two, two of the really important things. And then we wanted to talk about the CFRs, the proposed rule. Uh, they are, the status of that right now is that they're, uh, they're on the table, they're not being implemented yet. And there's no talk about them being implemented right now. But we expressed how the fact that they're still out there, we wanted them eradicated. We wanted a statement, uh, that from them, from our federal government, from our trustee, saying that these are off the table, they're, they're killed off, be eradicated. And not just have them lingering, where we're in the shadows of those CFRs that are preventing new companies from coming in, not knowing what the rules are gonna be when they get here. Or the companies that are already here can't bring in partners and investments with that lingering over this. We, we explained all that to them, and they were all ears. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll get some support, especially from our senators and congressmen, Senators Lucas Mullin, uh, Congressman Lucas, Senator Mullin, Senator Langford. And uh, so that was the, the CFRs, the well records, the same way. We explained how, uh, and this was kind of a point of contention. Uh, it got me, uh, maybe, uh, a little bit aggressive, which I apologize for when, uh, when we were talking about these well records. We were explaining to Mr. Davis, Scott Davis, of the Department of Interior, how important they are, and that they're locked up, and how devastating they are. And I told him it was urgent, these matters were urgent. It wasn't something that, that can be, uh, uh, just chewed on for a while. We need action right away. And, and the, the well records was a big issue in, in the, I mentioned Ms. Kokanos, because she was behind me, sitting in a chair, we didn't know she was gonna be there. And after I was complaining and explaining to Mr. Davis about the well records and how it was, she types in, uh, and respectfully, uh, she didn't just blurt it out, but uh, she did say, "Well, the well records, the privacy of the well records is a matter of federal law, and we're just enforcing the federal law." And I think the law, uh, may be one of our iniquities, pointed out to be the law that, that, that this may fall under, just the HIPAA, the HIPAA law. Uh, so anyway, we talked about that, we talked about poor states at length, different places, especially the EPA. And then finally, uh, we talked about the Inhofe rider. That was a rider that was attached to the Safety Act from several years ago. Uh, where Senator Inhofe, that the town had, had drafted and got passed late at night, I think it referred to as a midnight rider, because of the hour of the night it was. Where it, uh, it affected jurisdiction in giving more authority over to the state of Oklahoma, uh, for tribal lands and activities on tribal lands. Especially permitting for class one through class six wells. And so we had, we, we told, we told Washington that we have recognition from our state governor, governor state. That they recognize that we're exempted from that Inhofe rider, and we were seeking, uh, federal acknowledgement. That they recognize that we're exempted from that Inhofe rider, and we were seeking, uh, federal acknowledgement that we have an exemption, uh, recognized by the federal government, that the Inhofe applied, uh, rider does go reply to our mineral state. So, those are the five main issues that we went up there with, concentrated on, we took turns, uh, sharing this information. It was, like I said earlier, at certain groups, we discussed certain subjects, and there were a couple of the groups that we talked about, about all five subjects. But that's been my take on it. I think it's overall a really good trip.
Thank you, Councilman Regard. Yeah, I, uh, uh, my niece, we drove up there. I paid for everything myself, and we stayed all night in Kentucky. And, uh, went through Memphis, and got to see, uh, BB King's Restaurant. We stayed all night in the town. Then we, uh, went up on into DC and, uh, got to see the, the Shenandoah Valley, you know, that was, if you haven't seen the Shenandoah Valley, you really should. Thank you, Lacy. And all those points that he, that he talked about is true, and, uh, the only thing, when, when we got up there that night, it was on Monday night, and we went to dinner, and we heard that the Hayes case was dismissed. At a very night, and, uh, you know, I told her, I always say, you know, the, the other day, I said, if you're, if you're all really worried about anything in this, in this mineral state, that's the one you should be worried about. The Hayes case, cause if you had driven had his way, because it shut this whole county down. Whole county, and shut it down, there wouldn't be no production. That's the one you should be worried about up there. The Hayes one and Hayes two, twenty sixteen all the way to twenty twenty-five. And we heard that when we were in DC, and that was, that was really gratifying. It's dismissed, and I think it deserves a hand, I'm sure. So, uh, all the points that were made, I, I, we left early, about three o'clock after the B and B, and signatures carried on, and it was a gratifying trip, and, uh, and I told our, our council, it was, uh, we felt real good when we left at DC, we felt real good, we felt gratified, we felt like we're, we're being supported by the different United States government, and they're all for us. Council, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Irwin, then Councilman.
Okay, uh, since I've heard up there, you do not owe us an apology, Mr. Rebar, but I would think that you would owe a letter of apology to Scott Davis.
I don't owe anybody an apology.
There you go.
No, I don't.
I get it, I get it.
What, what would I owe an apology for?
All right, all right, Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, one thing I forgot, which I like, Mr. Rebar's summary, uh, we told everybody in DC, the Osage shareholders own this trust, and they, they were the only nation that, we're the only Indian entity that pay for our reservation cash. Those kind of things they don't know. Yeah. And then, they, the United States treat us specially. Matter of fact, Scott Davis, who's the interior guy, said, what other tribes is this agency, uh, administering to? And we said, nobody, just the Osage. That's how unique we are. They don't know these things. So, I agree with our attorney, we need to continue going up there. Because I've never sat down with our senators as a native, make it a native thing here. You are, are, God, we're under guardianship. You, you're our, your, we're your responsibility, and we're, we're gonna express our concerns here and here and here. And they have to, that's their job, they have to listen and come up with a solution. So, that's the thing I try to do, is make it who we are as natives under the trust, and let them know that we, they can't treat us like other nations, other Indian tribes. We're specific, we're special, we have our own agents. And the last thing I wanted to say was, the most powerful thing that Mr. Rebar brought up was, that a person coming straight under the Trump administration looked across the table at us and said, yes, we are going to carry on the Osage's authority on environmental over their reservations. She, I can't remember her name.
Victoria Tran.
Victoria.
Tran.
Tran, who's directly appointed, said they are gonna carry on this negotiated UIC program, but also the, the class six under considerations. They're gonna take that, but what we fought for under our development of the nineteen, what I call the nineteen eighty tribe party agreement between the tribal council, the Osage, uh, the BIA and the EPA, we're carrying that on. So, in like manner, I thought the Department of Interior, uh, the EPA, all the departments we visited, they were in the same tone. And then I started realizing how powerful our Osage shareholders, headright holders, and they very much take it ser- seriously. That they are very well aware of. So, I agree with Raleigh, we need to keep going up. It really does have the impact. Now, what I told Raleigh later today, I said, we got some really good backing, it seems like lower level Bureau people or DOI people are resisting. They don't want to carry on what we were told in DC, they want to kind of do things mishmash down on this level. And when I was hearing our attorney say, yeah, that's kind of what's still going on, so we gotta keep fighting to get these people on top to tell the lower folks, they need to roll out these elements that they've agreed to in DC. So, I appreciate your summary, Mr. Rebar. I just wanted to add that a little later bit too. Thank you.
Also, uh, uh, our, one of our assistants, uh, recorded the miles that we, we walked, and we walked twenty-seven miles. And that's like walking to Sedan, Kansas, that, that's how far I've. Councilman Regard.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and I appreciate those words from Councilman Redcorn. I wanted to, uh, to advise everyone that when we showed up at the meeting, our very first meeting was, was with the DOE, and there were twenty people that, that sat in on that meeting to meet with us. Uh, maybe eight of them or so by Zoom, but that room, in that conference room, in table, it was monstrous. We had, we had twenty, we had twenty people that, to meet with us. Likewise with the EPA, when we went, met with Victoria, uh, uh, Tran. She was actually filling in for Usha Turner of the EPA.
Oh, and Councilman Rebar, how'd she address us?
What?
Remember how she addressed us?
My way. That's right, that's a good point. Uh, but that meeting had almost twenty participants, and including, and I want to give a shout out, I did to them, I let, I let, I, I spoke up and said how much, you know, uh, cooperation we're getting from Region Six in Dallas. Of the EPA that oversees the permitting of, of all of our injection wells. And they were on the screen as a Zoom calls. So, uh, uh, we were, we, they'd been preparing for our, for, for us to come. And we, uh, like I said, they put together a big group of people to meet with us. So, we were really well respected.
Lacy, I want to say to the council, uh, waiting on a resolution, uh, we discussed in executive session with our, our attorney, Raleigh Wilson. Lacy's got it, I believe. Have you got it, Lacy?
Sir, I'd like to make a motion.
Motion on the floor.
Therefore, be resolved, Osage Minerals Council rejects the post any attempt to go to the nation in its self-temperature compact with the Bureau of Indian Affairs under twenty-five United States Code, Section fifty-three sixty-one through fifty-three seventy-seven. Or any other federal law that includes BI functions and authorities relating to oversight, regulatory, any arrangement of Osage mineral state. And council further supports banning all federal functions related to Osage mineral state with the Bureau of Indian Affairs or our federal trustee. Therefore, to the chairperson of the Osage Minerals Council hereby authorize such resolution, not supporting documents.
Second, second, my councilman Big Horse. Uh, and it's, I just got one thing to say to the constituents, uh, about, about what we're doing right now. I want to let you all know that we, that we're not taking a backseat to this. We never, we never had it. And we, we feel, we feel how you feel. We feel exactly how you feel. We're, we're not backing off at all. That's what, uh, Chuck Timlin asked me all ago, he said, uh, he said, we're behind you all the way. Well, that, that's, that's, that's what we feel. We're, we're behind you all the way. Because the other, the other one voted sin, you voted sin. We do, we do what we have to do to, uh, please you, please you. That, that's what we're here for. That's my discussion. And my dad sits right here, my grandfather sits here, my great-grandfather sits here, my great-great-grandfather probably sits somewhere in Kansas. There's all the, on, on down the line. And my brother's sitting here, my uncle's sitting here, my brother's sitting here. Now, I'm sitting here. I'm one of the youngest one in my family, my immediate family. And I'm doing the same thing as they, they, they protected the mineral state. And that's what I'm doing. And, and, and we're trying our best to develop. And, and we're limited on, on limited basis how we develop it too. We gotta, we gotta do grants, we gotta do, ask for money from the Osage Congress, we gotta do that. But, but someday, uh, I think it'll get better. I, I, it's, it's gotten a little better because we've got a little more money. Councilman Regard.
Off with the question.
Off with the question.
Councilman Chappford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishu Wallace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chairman.
Last, last item was item ten on old business, three minutes, entertain a motion.
Motion. Yes, sir, I'd like one clarification. I had to leave. We lost our water, my neighbor had passed, we had to try to get him into our chapel, and I make no apologies, I had to. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a great amendment.
Any other discussion? Off with the vote.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishu Wallace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappford?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anytime the votes need to charge.
Any discussion? Off with the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishu Wallace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin? Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller? Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council, good meeting.